Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting Tuesday, September 22nd, 2027 PM of the Trumbull Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Belief.
The face of America.
I'm going to ask that in the room to remain standing for a moment of silence for Mary Ellen Bolton. Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to express our deepest sympathies on the loss of Mary Ellen. She was beautiful inside and out. It was an honor and a pleasure to work with her. Her intellect and genuine love for her school community set the model from which all came to benefit. May God bless her family and may he bless and let her soul rest in infinite peace. Okay, our next item is correspondence, Mrs. Northdale.
We received 49 emails, many of which have been either remedied or at least addressed. Monica Terry offered a suggestion on how to increase teacher-student contact time. She suggested that Cohort A could go to school on the first Wednesday of the month and Cohort B could go on the third Wednesday. Clara Laporte and Tony Dorsey feel that our distance learning program is very poor and needs lots of improvements, especially at the K-1, 2 level. Gloria Manna complained that the recommended summer reading at Trumbull High didn't represent a balanced political view and encourage content contrary to the US Constitution. She included a reading list of 14 books that she felt would counter the narrative. Jamie Mulgall was appalled to hear of the type of teaching that is taking place at Trumbull High School and would like the Board of Education to investigate. Sirhan Etamad will speak tonight representing 402 Trumbull students and alumni seeking a curriculum that would be anti-racist. Fran Becksegill, Carrie Hall, and Sharon Levin want the pay-for-play reduced for cross-country. The Coley family are appealing to us again to have the math team begin to hold sessions virtually. Suzanne Carey, Sharon Dias, Alexandra Keller, Jennifer Keegan, Danny Mesner, Dana Dombrowski, Gisette Keklik, Maria Manis, Jennifer Burdard all felt that it's time to hear more about our reopening plans and would like to know what is our plan for going full-time. Michelle Black wants to know if the audit is completed and if it is, when will it ever be public? Gattano DeLeo on behalf of the Jane Ryan families of Room 168 presented a list of complaints and a list of suggestions that they would like to hear from answers from the board. Laura Weisenze thanked the board and said she had set up a great, we had set up a great hybrid plan and that the Trumbull High School remote learning plan was good because it continued even when students were in quarantine. Thank you from Laura, also Satella, for the Board of Ed's support in asking for what they wish to be changed. That is our correspondence this week.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will do our public comment. Our first speaker is Erica Friend.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Erica Friend and I have a kindergartner and second grader at Booth Hill School and Vice President of Booth Hills PTA. First, I'd like to thank all of the teachers, staff, and Mr. Pierce at Booth Hill for their dedication to the hybrid school reopening. They were given no easy task and we know that they're working tirelessly to make this the best experience for our students and have been going above and beyond. I know many families at Booth Hill appreciate all of their hard work and has not gotten a notice, so thank you so much. Second, I'd like to urge Dr. Semmel and the Board of Ed to reevaluate whether elementary students, specifically grades K through 2, could attend the full four days in person, and if not now, when? Surrounding schools such as Monroe, Newtown, and Ridgefield have already announced plans to reopen in full for at least elementary students. Trumbull's reopening plan did not include a plan of how and when the hybrid versus in-person versus full-distance learning would be reevaluated. Our students have now been in person for two and a half weeks and it's clear that elementary students, teachers, and parents are struggling with three days at-home distance learning, which is 60% of the week. Teachers are juggling students in person and at home and they're doing twice the job that they signed up for with synchronous learning. Elementary student parents are having to constantly remind their child to pay attention to the computer, checking that they're muted or unmuted appropriately, juggle multiple children at home with varying and conflicting schedules, technology issues, one or more parents working from home, or having to find alternate care for the distance learning days, just to list a few of the struggles. While I have two children Cohort A and they should be able to at least socialize together on their days at home, they're not able to because they have two completely different schedules, which is understandable, but they can't even have lunch and snack together or have recess together. For a moment, please put yourself in the shoes of the parents, teachers, and students and imagine what our days look like when students are at home. I think I speak for a lot of elementary school parents that they're full of frustration, fighting, some tears, and not the same level of learning that they would achieve in school. Parents and children relationships are being strained and in some cases, we're watching our students regress instead of progress and we're beating ourselves up daily for a task that we're not meant to do, to be a teacher, parent, and principal all-in-one on the days that our kids are at home. This model is not sustainable or healthy in the long run for anyone. Elementary students, especially the younger grades of K through 2, need to be in person with their teacher more often. Kindergarten students are not meant to be learning letter formations and classroom routines via computer. First and second grade students should not be asked to log into multiple topics a day and spend hours in front of a computer as if they're in middle school or high school. But our teachers are doing their best and we really do appreciate that. But our kids are learning via computer for more hours than they're learning in person, yet the teachers are still exposed to the same amount of students every week and are doing more work than ever and going above and beyond their jobs. Because the temporary remote learning option continues to be available for families that do not feel comfortable attending school in person, I'm asking for a plan to reconsider that the in-person students can attend for school for four days a week and I believe that I speak for many elementary school parents with that request. I understand that this will involve careful consideration of the well-being of our students and teachers and I hope that both their physical and mental well-being is considered in reconsidering the plan. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Braxich.
Good evening, I'm Matt Braxich and I am here tonight on behalf of the Trumbull Education Association as the representative to the Board of Education and I have a prepared statement from them that I'd like to read. So, school is back in session and Trumbull's teachers have spent the last few weeks connecting with their students and working to make them feel comfortable in these unusual circumstances. However, it has not been easy for teachers. For the last three weeks, teachers have been hearing the message from their building administrators that we're all in this together, but at the September 8th Board of Education meeting, teachers heard a very different message from former interim Superintendent Isagna. At that meeting, the TEA communicated to the Board of Education that teachers' anxiety was through the roof because of a lack of clear communication on the part of central office and because of lack of cleaning supplies and PPE in classrooms. Rather than offer to work to remedy these concerns and to try to bring teachers' anxiety levels down, Superintendent Isagna responded with falsehoods. He said that TEA statements were inaccurate. He said that the reason why there was not plexiglass in some classrooms is because teachers did not want plexiglass in their classrooms. He also said that any teacher who wanted plexiglass or cleaning supplies in their classroom received them and these statements were not true. To be clear, teachers were never asked if they wanted plexiglass in their classrooms and the only way for a teacher to request it was with the doctor's note. Some teachers who requested plexiglass with the doctor's note waited too long for its arrival. Since the reopening plans began, there has never been a survey to teachers to see what teachers needed to feel safe in their classrooms. The one time that teachers, parents, and building administrators were involved in the planning for reopening on the curriculum subcommittee, everything that they had worked on and agreed to in the subcommittee was changed by central office administration without any notice or consultation. When the TEA raised these issues at the Board of Ed meeting, Superintendent Isagna responded by saying that he hoped that the TEA and the TA executive were ready to work together to find and solutions to the problems that will arise. Public Schools Central Office Administration to find solutions and we are eager to work with Dr. Semmel to establish a mutually beneficial working relationship. Already, teachers are seeing more cleaning supplies in classrooms and increased transparency in the district. I also want to encourage the board to approve tonight's proposal to, the TA has been advocating for this since July.
You wrap past two minutes, thank you.
The TA. I'm sorry?
Can you wrap it up a little?
Absolutely, this is my last sentence. The TA has been advocating for this since July as it will greatly benefit teachers and students in the district. Trumbull Public Schools is fortunate to have talented teachers and it's time to include them as partners for the good of Trumbull Public Schools and Trumbull students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shervan Etamad.
Hi, my name is Shervan Etamad and I'm a graduate of Trumbull High School's class of 2010. I'm here tonight to share a letter signed by students and alumni of the Trumbull Public School System asking for a review of and changes to the curriculum, culture, and policies to ensure that anti-racism is centered in our education. This letter was signed by 402 students and alumni of the Trumbull Public School System, ranging from current high school students to graduates in the class of 1964. Given time constraints, I will share a short excerpt from the letter here tonight. As proud students and alumni of TPS, we believe that TPS has both an invaluable opportunity and the civic duty to lead our community in conversation and actions that address racial justice. We value the exceptional education we received in TPS and we recognize the role that our education has played in making us who we are today. However, we feel that our education did not allow us to critically engage with the enduring legacies of racism in our country and society. Too often, our education lacked explicit and critical explorations of race and ignored stories of Black Americans and other marginalized communities. No curriculum is neutral. The decision of what is and is not taught to Trumbull students, what stories are told and who tells them, is an active choice made by those with the power to shape and direct educational policy. Racism is pervasive in every aspect of American society and a majority white town like ours is far from immune from its insidious effects. Anti-racism requires that we look beyond the status quo to ensure that the direction of our educational system points toward justice. We call upon the Board of Education to introduce and hold a vote on a resolution that commits Trumbull Public Schools to implement specific anti-racist actions such as the detailed recommendations made in the recent report, quote, "Creating an Anti-Racist Culture and Curriculum in TPS", and the recent letter from Trumbull Educators Against Racism. Our public schools have the unique responsibility of educating the next generation. We urge you, as our local leaders, to use the tools at your disposal to ensure that our students receive an education that prepares them to be active participants in the creation of a more just and equitable society. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gloria Manna.
Hi, I am a Trumbull High School parent and a Tasha parent. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here tonight to advocate for the adoption of a newly released curriculum called 1776 Unites. It is, it was written by Robert Woodson. He has been running a foundation for urban school districts and neighborhoods since 1981 to combat youth violence. He's been, he's a graduate of the Civil Rights Movement. He walked with Dr. King. He headed the National Urban League Institute. He's won the Presidential Citizens Award. He's a fellow at the American Enterprise Foundation. He's just got a phenomenal record of achievement and he is certainly an American hero. In response to the growing call to deny the truth about American history and the struggle for freedom and civil rights among Black Americans, he has commenced the 1776 Unites Project. Unlike the 1619 Project that intentionally omits critical truths about America's founding in an effort to persuade the American people to give up on the founding ideals of our nation, ideals evidenced in the lives of so many great Americans like Frederick Douglass, Booker T. Washington, and Martin Luther King, the 1776 Unites Curriculum presents historically factual and whole truth about American history as presented by Black and Brown Americans, scholars from around the nation. It is the true lesson of American exceptionalism that I think every one of our students should learn and needs to learn. I grew up in an urban school district. I still work there. I've been there 27 years. I've been an administrator for 17 years, in education for 27, and I have been teaching civics education in my elementary school for several years now because I noticed a need in society with teachers, with parents, children who lack an understanding of American history and I think we're seeing the results of that across the world today. I think there is no better time than now to reintroduce civics education in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cat Lamy.
Part of our Trumbull teachers. I have many friends that are teachers here in Trumbull and have seen firsthand how hard they are working now, harder than I have ever seen them work. They are tired, physically exhausted, and hoarse from trying to speak loud enough while wearing masks so their students can hear them. Our teachers are working late into the night and on weekends. I heard about a teacher who prepared individual binders of schoolwork for each student in her class and hand-delivered them to the students' doorsteps. I witnessed my neighbor, who's another teacher in the district, dropping everything on a Wednesday at 6:30 in the morning just to run over to the school to get a Chromebook so that a student would have a Chromebook for distance learning that day. I'm sure there are countless other examples of how our Trumbull teachers are going above and beyond the call of duty. Many Trumbull teachers worked all summer just to prepare for school opening. They taught themselves new technology and new teaching methods. They did much of this while sacrificing time with their own families and missing out on the valuable time during the summer when they normally recharge. We have asked teachers to do the impossible. They are teaching to two cohorts of students and temporary remote learners as well as simultaneously teaching in their class and online students. They have had to rework their lesson plans to suit distance learning and make sure that our children have the best educational experience possible. Trumbull teachers have definitely risen to the challenge. I'd like to add a special note of thanks to the 14 teachers that teach my two sons at Trumbull High School. It's obvious that each of you have all put in a great deal of time and energy into making sure my children are engaged in learning. Trumbull teachers, you are valued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next order of business is the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. And this is my, I was looking at the days on the calendar. This is day seven for me here in Trumbull and clearly, there's a lot going on. So, it's been a, it's been a busy seven days, but it's been enjoyable. It's definitely been a pleasure getting to know all the staff. There's many of the staff that I've been able to meet along the way so far. I am going to give a bit of an update today. It's going to take a little bit longer than maybe future updates, but I hope you bear with me. To start, I just want to give some updates on some of our hires that are coming up in the district. We do have a Director of People Services. It's been an open position and we've been working on that. We're going to have two rounds of interviews this week. So, we're getting closer and closer to moving a candidate to the full Board of Ed for an interview process review. So, we're hoping we can fill that in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, we have a very competent Director of People Services now and she's, she's an interim and it's time to find somebody full-time. At the same time, we've been working hard on finding the replacement for the Jane Ryan Principalship and we've done that. And I believe that he'll be online with us today through Zoom, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to find him. But I want to make a few comments about him. And I do want to, I did not know Mary Ellen Bolton, but I can tell you that I've had conversations with folks throughout this past weekend. It seems like she was a true educational leader and just a beautiful spirit. And so, I'm hoping she finds it appropriate that tonight, we're actually naming publicly the new Jane Ryan Principal. I hope she does find that fitting. I want to thank all the individuals who participated in the multiple rounds of interviews. During the interview process, Mr. Pat Coran has been described as genuine, caring, honest, open, nurturing, positive, and someone who has a passion for students' success. He leads by example. His references have told me that he is more than ready to take on a principal role, but that he is also a learner. They say he is a special person who is organized and forever optimistic. And we anticipate that Pat will begin on or around October 22nd. So, I'm hoping that we can have Mr. Pat Coran come up on the Zoom call and he'll be, we're naming him tonight as the next Jane Ryan Elementary School Principal.
Hi, Pat.
Good morning, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing?
How are you?
I'm doing great.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Semmel, and thank you to the Trumbull families and the communities. First off, I would definitely like to thank Dr. Semmel and the board for giving me the opportunity to be the Principal of Jane Ryan Elementary School. I do know today, though, was a difficult day for the Jane Ryan family. I also want you to know that I'm thinking of each and every one of you at this moment. I know we're going to honor Mary Ellen by continuing the tremendous work that she and the staff have already begun together. I'm so beyond grateful and honored to follow such an amazing educator and such a good person. I know I have big shoes to fill, but I do want everyone to know that I'm ready for the challenge. I'm confident that I am the right person to move Jane Ryan forward and I know that together, we're going to continue to uphold the high standards and quality education that Jane Ryan has been providing for our students for so many years. To Jane Ryan's staff, students, families, and surrounding community members, I'm so, so excited and so thankful to be your new principal and I truly cannot wait to meet every single one of you. I know we're going to do great things together and I'm so looking forward to seeing everybody around October 22nd. I hope everybody has a great couple of days and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. I really should thank you.
Continuing on with the superintendent's update. If you drove by Long Hill today, you may have noticed some picketers outside our buildings. The Bus Drivers Union is in negotiation with the owners. The bus drivers are picketing. I want to make it clear, though, the bus drivers are running their routes in the morning first, then they're coming here and picketing, and then they're going back and running their route. So, our students are continuing to be picked up. That's not a problem. However, I have asked our Director of Transportation to work with ownership to make sure that if the bus drivers do in fact go on strike, that we have a plan to ensure that our students are picked up and dropped off by the bus company. So, they are working on that particular plan. I do hope they're able to resolve the situation and I will keep people updated on that particular topic. We also have another personnel piece to talk about. Al Cameron has been a fixture in this building for the past nine months as the Business Manager, the interim Business Manager, and he has served, I think, the Trumbull Board of Education and Administration very well during this very difficult budget time. Al's last day is going to be technically Thursday as he's attending a Board of Finance meeting that evening. I've only known Al a short period of time. I want to thank him for his dedication to this district. Mr. Paul Hendrickson began his work this past Thursday as the new full-time Business Manager and he is ready to pick up the ball from where Al is leaving it. And later on, we're going to hear a presentation from Mr. Cameron, but I wanted to make sure I noted that his work here. I know Mr. Isagna would have definitely made some comments about his appreciation for Al as well. And then I do want to speak, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you very much.
I also want to speak about the reopening plan. We didn't physically put it as a item on the agenda, but I definitely want to speak about reopening. As I mentioned before, I've been here seven days, so there's been a lot that has come my way. And you heard some of the comments from public comment. There's a range of topics that people want to talk about. So, I want to make sure we address this a bit today. I think we could talk about it for an hour easily, but I'll keep it to a few minutes. First of all, I do want to say, commend that the teachers and the principals of this district have been putting forth significant effort to make this work for all families. I know you hear negatives and you hear people suggest that, you know, it's not going well and there's always areas that we can improve for sure. But when you think about what teachers have been asked to do, and I had the chance to go into a number of classrooms and see them physically doing it, I mean, they're getting a workout, doing the work. And it's not just a workout, actually teaching the kids in front of them, making sure the technology is working, teaching the kids who are home, but then they're also doing all the preparation for that. So, I do want to make sure we just, we recognize, and one of the speakers, Cat Lamy, had also commended the teachers as well. I just want to make sure we recognize the fact that they are working extremely hard. And keep in mind, they're doing this with a number of staff reductions that directly impacted them this year. A number of support staff that work directly with teachers were cut going into the school year, from math specialists to literacy specialists to technology integrators. Those were all people that support the teachers. And of course, you want to keep class sizes lower, so you do have to look outside of that and it was a very difficult year. But that didn't make this process for what teachers are doing now any easier. And our principals have been doing fabulous work, trying to make sure they keep everything coordinated, making sure they work with the staff, hear them, listen to them, and try to solve all the different situations that come up. So, I want to give them a specific shout-out. But then I also want to just give the entire staff in this, the Trumbull Public Schools a shout-out. I don't want to start naming other groups, but you have so many people who are doing so many different things because of COVID and they're working hard. We're certainly making mistakes and learning as we go, but certainly I see people who are very engaged and interested in making sure that this district goes well and does well. Also around reopening, I think we should talk about contact tracing. Contact tracing and quarantining is certainly an interesting topic and I listen every morning to a DPH webinar where superintendents, nurses, Director of Nursing, Department of Public Health people get online and we listen about all the different things going on. These are multiple hours of webinars and contact tracing and quarantining comes up often. So, there's a lot around that and I'm putting together an email with our Director of Nursing, Lynn Steinberg, who's been amazing as we talk through some of these issues. So, I can send out to all parents and staff some of the very specific things that need to happen around quarantining. Because I'll get an email that says, well, this district did it this way and this district did it this way, but it's very case-sensitive and it's very dependent upon when the issue happened, when the positive case came in, how many people they're with. So, there's a lot of situations and issues that go with that and I'm hoping to be able to send that out so people have a better idea of how that contact tracing and quarantining works. And I think the most important piece to talk about is we know this is going to be a rocky road. We do know that cases are going to go up, down. We don't know at what rate they're going to go up and down. I don't think anybody can predict that, but we continue to pay attention to the data. I do believe that this district needs to start thinking about bringing back more of our learners and for more often. I absolutely believe that's true, but I think we need to do this in a thoughtful way. So, I will start working with the leadership and the staff to be able to start talking about what that should look like. I wish I could have been talking about this my first day here, but that, there was just so much to do. So, now that I'm seven days in, you know, I've got a great footing at this point, but I agree that we need to start bringing in additional people and personally, I envision bringing our youngest children in first. I believe that the youngest learners really need to be in person with their teachers and learning from them. And yes, we have heard that multiple towns around us have already announced plans and it's not a competition. You know, it's one of those things where we need to do it the right way. We need to make sure that we work with our people and get this done right. I'm sure certain people would want it done tomorrow and I can understand that, but we're going to work with folks and get this figured out. So, we're going to bring some in. So we're going to bring some some people together, especially if we're going to talk about bringing, say, kindergartners and first graders together. I want to make sure we're talking to the elementary principals, the custodial leadership, Dr. Budd, myself, and of course kindergarten, first grade teachers to to make sure we're aware of their concerns and so that we can do this. I envision trying to phase this in with our youngest, watching that, see how that goes for a couple of weeks, and then moving to phase in additional people, you know, additional kids, additional grades, always keeping an eye on the health metrics and moving forward. So that's that's the plan, but I would like to hear from the folks we'll we'll listen to over the next coming week so we can put together a much more detailed plan on that. But a lot of people know that it's certainly on my radar. I think it's on the board. I know it's on the board's radar, and we're we'll move forward with that. So that's that is my update for tonight.
Thank you. Busy seven days. Dr. Simbel, huh? Okay, the next is the Board Chairman Report. First of all, I'd like to tell you that during public comment, Joanna Suriani, I spoke to her personally this afternoon, but she did not make her comment tonight, but she expressed her comments to me. She lives in Washington, DC. She is a former graduate of Trumbull Public, so we spoke this afternoon, so I want everybody to know that. Hi, Joanna, and thank you for your call.
Okay, I would like to thank Donna Zidell for the administrative acumen, patience, and effort she provided as she led the Jane Ryan community adapting principle. We thank you for your support in providing a seamless transition during the most difficult time. We all wish you the very best, and again, many thanks. And I want to welcome Dr. Simbel to Trumbull Public in his first busy week. Thank you very much, and we wish you the best of luck as we move forward. We're all happy to be working with you. Okay, I do want to thank John Morello, Dr. Simbel, and the board for working together to get the Hillcrest pool situation partially on track. So I think we did that. They are starting to use the pool this week, and there was a schedule that was done by John Morello, and I want to give him all the credit for that. Thank you for working so hard to get this partially resolved, and there will be continued meetings on on that issue. And that is my report. Thank you very much. Our next is our Student Board of Ed, and it's either Gabriella Biondi or Jack Allen. Are one of you on?
Hi, everyone. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Hi, Gabriella, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Hi, thanks. Thanks for being here.
I would just like to introduce myself. My name is Gabby Biondi. Myself along with Jack, my classmate, Jack Allen, are this year's Student Board of Ed representatives. We would first like to thank the board for this opportunity. In Trumbull, I am involved in both sports and clubs, including the math team, peer leaders, and link crew, and a member of the choir as well. Outside of school, I work as a certified EMT and a basketball coach through the town. As we enter our third week of school this week, students are beginning to become more adjusted to the hybrid learning. I would also like to thank our teachers for all the hard work they've been putting forth as they are learning and adjusting to the new model as well. Trumbull High has strictly enforced its one-way walking areas and the up and down staircases throughout the school. However, some concerns students have is other students not wearing masks in the hallways, as well as what Trumbull's plan to open full in person moving forward. Furthermore, as seniors at Trumbull High, Jack and I are both a part of the Trumbull High We the People team, and recently sang and recorded a music video for Constitution Day to surprise our teacher, Ms. Bowden. Many of you may have seen the video already, but if not, I encourage you to check it out and see the amusing things that my fellow classmates and I have done, and we are excited to show you what We the People has in store for this year. As a member of the math team, I've received confirmation that the math team will be allowed to meet virtually and compete against other schools in this manner. However, this still leaves the question of the fate of the other clubs at Trumbull High and whether they will be funded and allowed to occur this year.
Thank you. Is Jack available or is it just you tonight, Gabby?
Ah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes, is that Jack? Hi, Jack, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Similar.
Give some information.
I'm sorry I missed that.
You want to give us some background on who you are and what you're doing at Trumbull High, so you know?
Yeah, sure. So my name is Jack Allen. I'm a senior at Trumbull High School. At Trumbull High School, I'm part of the baseball team, the Honors Chamber Choir, and I've participated in the spring musical for all three years at Trumbull High School. This past summer, I was a coach with Trumbull Travel Baseball, and I was lucky to have coached the 13-year travel team. Trumbull's community is of great importance to me, and I'm glad to be in a position to help students' voices be heard. As we enter week three of our hybrid system, one thing is certainly clear to me, and it's that students are happy to be back in school. The one-way hallways, like Gabby mentioned, have been something that students have taken notice of, as it has greatly helped the flow of traffic throughout the school. Students feel much more at ease with less traffic in the hallways, and it has certainly made a big impact in the general mood among the students. Furthermore, the seven-to-eight-minute passing time increase is greatly appreciated by all students, and it's most certainly necessary in doing the best that we could do to ensure social distancing while also being on time to class. While I received some clarity myself in regards to this this issue throughout the meeting already, I would like to move on by pointing out a common concern among the students. Throughout the school, it seems to be clear that students are most concerned with their own personal safety in regards to the pandemic that is still present throughout the country. Students are unsure whether or not Trumbull is underreacting or overreacting to the situation at hand. It would be very reassuring to the students to be granted some closure from those of you who are in charge. Moving forward, I'd like to propose an idea that was given to me by a student at Trumbull High School. This student proposed that select classes be granted permission to exercise or class on the outdoor areas of campus so that they can best participate in said classes at a proper social distance manner, such as classes like band, choir, art classes, and many others that would benefit from this. Being outside will allow these classes to return to some type of normalcy, and I certainly see the benefits of such a thing existing at Trumbull High School, although I am well aware of the safety protocol, safety protocols that would have to be in place. Apart from this, students are very happy with the lunch system that is firmly in place, particularly particularly at Trumbull High School, and are noticing the hard work of faculty in order in order to ensure we could eat safely at the school. Online school has been going much more smoothly than it did last spring, and students are very satisfied with the way it has been organized and executed. Lastly, the hybrid system of having two cohorts has been very effective in the sense that it has made the hallways much less chaotic than usual and has made students at Trumbull High School feel much safer in the classroom environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very well done. Thank you both of you. Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to our reports and action items, I'm going to need our approval of the minutes of the regular meeting. I'm going to need a motion for that.
I I rose, have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of September 8th, 2020.
I need a second?
I second.
Tim Gallo, second? Okay. Any questions on any of that information? No? Okay, then I'll take the vote. All right, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I'm in favor.
Scott Care?
In favor.
Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Andy Kelo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Okay, unanimous in favor. Thank you. Okay, our next item is personnel. Dr. Simbel.
All right, the personnel report that you see in front of you tonight is a listing of all the staff that was hired at the from the beginning of the year to get the the school year started. So it's a it's a pretty lengthy list of of names, and essentially, all you need to do is accept the fact that this report has been provided to you, and it's certainly a public document as well. So I make a motion to accept the report as given to us by Dr. Simbel.
I'll second that.
Who seconded?
Scott.
Scott, who seconded? Okay, all in favor? Let's start on this side.
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Kelo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Thank you. It's unanimous, all in favor.
The men in chairman, I think, you know, see the stars after certain names of students who have attended our public school and are coming back to be some teachers, as well as we have stars after the people in in Trumbull as teachers.
Right, well, on this list, there's a there's a double star that tells you with the PHS graduate, and the triple star tells you with the Trumbull resident, and the single star tells you with the shortage area. Okay?
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Okay, as we move on, the approval of the Trumbull Administrators Association Bargaining Unit, Attorney Dugus is here.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask for you to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Trumbull Board of Education and Trumbull Administrators Association for the period 2021 to 2024. Before I describe the agreement, just very basically, as as you all know, but for the benefit of those who may be watching remotely, these are approximately 20 administrators in the district below the rank of superintendent, assistant superintendent. You could refer to them as your first-line supervisors, your attendants in the field, but they're the folks who supervise and run the schools on a day-to-day basis and and do a terrific job. Our negotiations, I think, were very professional. They're very cordial. I want to thank Mr. Ward, of course, Marie Petiti, and Dr. Budd, who were with me during negotiations, and as always, provided tremendous guidance and and support and information. The 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 deal that we struck is a three-year deal, and of course, the wages and insurance are always the most important issue, so what we agreed to was a general wage increase of 1.99% for each of the three years of the collective bargaining agreement. Obviously, we're trying to keep it at 2% or below. The health insurance, the plan doesn't change because we're in the state partnership plan, but the contributions will go up slightly. They'll stay at 20% the first year. They'll go to 20.5% the second year, and then 21% the third year, which is the 23 through 24 year. What that does is it basically aligns them to the extent the teacher contract has years and facing a consideration, of course, the fact that the wages are not the type of increases we've seen in prior years. There were a number of language changes. I won't spend much time in those, except to say that in the provision for those who choose to waive health insurance, we already have language in this contract essentially saying if you have a spouse who works for the Board of Education, you can't get the waiver, you can't double dip. We've extended that to not only Board of Education employees, but also town employees, because ultimately, all comes out of the taxpayer's pocket, so that's an improvement in the health insurance area. General language included conforming the service fee provisions in the collective bargaining agreement to the Supreme Court Janus decision eliminating mandatory service fees for those who don't want to be in the union, and a number of other fairly minor changes. Maybe not so minor when we talk about prorating vacation in the first year somebody is with the district, so if they show up mid-year, they don't get full load of of vacation entitled, and a number of other fairly minor changes. The the settlement data from last year was slightly over 2% settlement, around 2.1%. We don't have a lot of data because Trumbull tends to be one of the first ones out of the box, but so far, the number surprisingly actually looks like it's picking up about 10%. But I would expect that to come down, so I think the settlements are going to be in that 2, 2.1% range for administrators. So at 1.99, we're within the ballpark, it's not very low. And and I should note that we always look at how your wages compared to other districts coming into this process, and and they're certainly very competitive. They're not very high, they're not very low, but they're certainly competitive. So based upon that, I would endorse and recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Attorney Dugus, and I would make that motion to approve the Trumbull Administrators Association Bargaining Unit Agreement. And there are some questions certainly folks can ask, and I want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know that it's been a lengthy process. So I made that motion to approve the Trumbull Administrators Association Bargaining Unit Agreement.
I need a second?
Second, the motion.
Mike Ward, second. Anyone with a question for Attorney Dugus? No, all in favor, then I will take the vote. Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I'm in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
I'm in favor.
Andy Kelo?
Favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. All in, that's unanimous, we all agree. Thank you very much, attorney Dugus, for everything. Mike Ward and Marie Petiti, thank you.
Dugus gets a way to point out.
I can't even speak.
Mike, you have to speak into the mic.
Mrs. Petiti, I want to thank you for all your hard work this summer. The meetings were well run. You was on top of it. You had a lot more information on our side than they had on their side. We want to thank you very much for a well job, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Floyd. I agree with that. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney Dugus. Okay, we're moving on. Next is mental health, social and emotional support grant update. Dr. Budd, Mrs. Corones?
My name is Marilena Corones. I'm the president of the Trumbull PPSA Council. In this capacity, I represent both the council members, but also the leaders of our PPA units across our different schools. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight on behalf of the council, and thank Dr. Budd for inviting me to present and share some exciting news with the board, but also all of those who are watching us tonight. Last June, the Trumbull PPSA Council learned of an opportunity to apply for a national PPA grant to be used to cover expenses associated with COVID relief in our educational community. Members of the council immediately mobilized to submit the grant application. We decided to focus our application on the area of mental health and social emotional support, and this decision was based on feedback that we received from parents, Trumbull parents. The council polled parents across four different social media platforms and learned that mental health was the number one issue that they felt could be impacted with grant hunting. To strengthen our application, we reached out to various educational institutions that offer professional development for teachers, and we identified as the most viable partnership, one with the Bank Street College of Education in New York City. Bank Street's offering was impressive because it included two key components. First, a comprehensive, research-based professional development series for all of our K through A teachers that focuses on transitional issues and social emotional techniques tailored to support teachers returning to school after the pandemic shutdown. Second, the Bank Street offering includes a parent workshop addressing the topic specifically of parenting in the time of COVID nineteen. We submitted our grant application in June, and we were confident. We were confident because we knew that it had three key components. First, our application aligned with parental concerns. Second, the application identified our intent to partner with a reputable institution. And third, our application had the backing of our district administrators and our Board of Education. Letters of support were provided to us by the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the Chair of the Board of Education. In late August, we learned that our efforts produced positive results. The Trumbull PPSA Council was one of few that was awarded $15,000 to bring to our district the program that I described earlier. The outcome demonstrates how impactful collaboration among our district's educational leaders could really be. The council is motivated by a commitment to helping all children in our district achieve their full potential. Support for our teachers is support for our children. The council remains hopeful that this program will empower students, teachers, and parents as we all navigate strange uncertain times. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Dr. Budd will share with you the specifics of how the program will actually unfold in the district.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
You can see what a pleasure it is to collaborate with Miss Cronis and her colleagues who run various PTAs at various schools. Uh, the fact is, this is a grant that's very meaningful to us because it's responsive to both parent concerns and staff concerns we've had related to social and emotional learning, and the COVID nineteen pandemic really provides an important context. So working with Bank Street, it's been really inspiring to be in some of the planning meetings with those who will be working with our teachers. We have identified a series of upcoming Wednesdays, September thirtieth, October seventh, and October fourteenth, when our pre-K through five teachers will participate in the morning in virtual learning sessions on emotionally-responsive practice. And they will be giving the students during that time asynchronous work, work that the students can perform and do on their own. Uh, but the teachers will be energized by this on a, on a weekly basis, and then this sets the stage for parent workshops, parenting in the time of COVID, that will be offered in later October, and then some follow-up uh, virtual coaching of teachers and administrators in our pre-K five schools on how do we meet the special social and emotional needs of students during this time. So given the scale of this, that we have over a hundred and fifty teachers who will be participating, it makes sense for us to give students at those grade levels asynchronous work to complete during those times, and I'm sure we'll have an update for you as these sessions roll along, and perhaps even some of our board members may want to participate if their schedules allow. I'm sure that would be fine with the Bank Street person, I'm very excited.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Thank you, Mrs. Cronis. Okay, our next agenda item is the approval the approval of the signature change form child nutrition program, Mrs. Cinco, or Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't look much like Mrs. Cinco.
No, you don't.
These two, uh, number E and F are both pretty routine. The State Department of, uh, Bureau of Child Nutrition requires that in order to submit the reimbursement for the Department of Agriculture, for the subsidies that are made available to the food service program, they have to have authorized signatures on board. Right now, the two authorized signers on behalf of the Trumbull Board of Ed are Mr. Isagna and myself. As you know, Mr. Isagna left last week or two weeks ago, I will be leaving soon. So it's time to get some new signatures, the new signatures are Dr. Semel and Paul Hendrickson, new businessmen.
Okay.
I'm asking to approve those signatures for number E.
Okay, I'll need a motion for.
I'd like to make the motion to approve and sign the revision of the authorized signers change form for the agreement for child nutrition program as noted above.
I need a second.
I second that.
Okay, seconded, two seconds there. Mr. Gallo, Mrs. Norso, okay, any questions on that? No, I don't think there should be, he was very clear. Okay, Mr. Gallo?
Uh, I'm in favor.
Okay, Mike Ward?
I approve, yes.
Uh, Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli in favor, okay, thank you. And the second part of that, Mr. Cameron, the child nutrition program, Head Start signature change form, same thing?
This is for Head Start signature change program. Uh, we have Matt Wheeler signature, the two signers there are Matt Wheeler and Dr. Semel, so we need to approve Dr. Semel's.
Okay. Uh, who's going to make that motion right?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion, the Head Start program is asking for approval and vote of signature change for him to remove this sign as the signer, and Head Start management plan can replace it with Dr. Semel.
Okay, I need a second.
Jackie Norso, seconds.
Jackie Norso, seconds, okay, all in favor, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
Favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli in favor, okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to the approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty annual report to the first elect, and Dr. Bud?
Thank you very much, everyone, it's my pleasure and honor to present this really on behalf of the prior superintendents, Gary Chalfy and Ralph Isagna, and um, it is a compilation of the main reports of the different divisions throughout the district. And in thinking about the most interesting or perhaps meaningful way to present this, could I just call your attention to one sentence on page eighteen? And uh, there are so many good things about TECHED, our Trumbull Early Childhood Education Center, that could be said, but Dr. Wheeler's entire report really represents the hope and optimism we have every day in the district, even in spite of difficult circumstances. And if you look at the last sentence, the first paragraph on the TECHED page, TECHED believes no child is typical, that every child is unique, and all children have valuable contributions to the lives and educations of their classmates. If you visit TECHED, you know, that's a principle Dr. Wheeler and his staff put into practice every single day. That's a practice all of us in the Trumbull Public Schools believe in for every child, pre-K through age twenty-one, that every child has valuable contributions, and it's our job to help actuate that for every child. That's the best way I can present this to you, to say that I do have the implicit mission behind what was a complicated year, and I would ask for your approval because then we can transmit this report to the first elect.
Thank you, Dr. Bud, I would put forward um, for a motion to approve the revised two twenty, twenty-twenty-one district calendar.
No, no.
I'm sorry, the two nineteen, I'm sorry, the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty annual report to the first elect.
I need a second.
I will second that, Scott Care.
Marie Patiti, just second, okay, anyone have a question on this? Dr. Bud?
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, I would like to formally offer my appreciation to Dr. Bud for bringing this report across the finish line um, and, and, you know, picking up and finishing it for us. It really is an incredible document, it's a great, a great reference guide for all of us as board members and the community members, and having, having written reports like this for other districts, uh, this is a really fine specimen. So thank you very much, Dr. Bud.
I appreciate it.
Agreed.
I have to give credit to my colleagues, mainly at Long Hill, whoever wrote the different sections and their colleagues out in the building, but thank you, Mr. Care.
And there's a quick comment on the policies, I didn't realize, I know they've worked very hard thirty-three and thirty-four, that is a tremendous amount of policy written by this, your committee.
We were one here. Thank you, on behalf of the Policy Committee, Mr. Ward, and I, I've been with you six years, you, you, Mr. Ward, have not joined the Policy Committee yet, perhaps at some appropriate time, you too want to be involved.
I did that several years ago, around two thousand six and seven.
Two thousand six and seven, Mr. Gallo has shared this very angrily at the committee member's work.
Thank you, and it is an incredible amount of policy that has been written during my short time here on the board, so again, very appreciative of that.
The state helps us out with many of those.
The state helps us out, and you do a fine job of compiling and assembling all this information and finding out the data so that the Policy Committee understands exactly what we need to vote for. Okay, um, anyone else with a question on this annual report?
Um, could I just make one more comment, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Again, I, it's a bit, a little bit of a backtracking because we moved so swiftly after um, uh, the report on the grant that was received through the PTSA, but that also is just an amazing accomplishment, and I just want to recognize that that partnership, that is exemplary work uh, between the district and the PTSA Council, and uh, it's just terrific to see, as a former PTSA president, that was pretty meaningful to see that happen. So thank you to everyone on that.
Anyone else with a question on the annual report? No, I will take the vote to pass it on to the first elect, Mr. Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
Favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli in favor, okay, thank you very much, Dr. Bud. Okay, our next is the approval of the revised twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one district calendar, Dr. Bud?
I don't think we've ever brought a calendar to you as many times for revision as we have this year, and I actually anticipate it may not be the last time, but at this particular juncture, we're asking you to make uh, changes to six Wednesdays coming up in the calendar, and as Mr. Braxick mentioned before, there is a very important need for our teachers to have some sustained time outside of the regular time they typically have in the day because of some of the complexities of the hybrid plan, because of the need to learn new technology, to think about how best to meet the needs of the students in the classroom, as well as those at home. And this is really more than can be accomplished in staff meetings or common planning time. So our proposal would alternate on uh, the next six Wednesdays, starting on the thirtieth, uh, two-hour early release afternoons on Wednesday, alternating uh, pre-K five teachers early release with grade six to twelve teachers early release. And so you see, the first group of times there is for the grades pre-K five students. Uh, on Wednesday, October seventh, October twenty-first, and November eleventh, the student contact time would end at one P M. And then from one-thirty to three-thirty would be time for two purposes. First of all, for some professional learning specifically in the technology area, and then time to plan with your colleagues, both of those aspects. And then the opposite Wednesdays, September thirtieth, October fourteenth, and October twenty-eighth, would be for the middle and high school teachers, the student day would end at twelve o'clock, and from twelve to two-thirty would be those, the same activities for those teachers. We strongly support this, we believe that alternating the pre-K five days with the grade six, twelve days uh, fits with our capacity to support good learning for teachers during that time. And you might reasonably ask, well, what about after, Wednesday, November eleventh? And there's just too many contingencies in the plan now for that. We don't know where we will be, where our students will be, where our plan will be, but you can anticipate that we may come back with a recurring need in this regard, what is responsible now is to ask it for these six Wednesdays.
Okay, I understand, all right, does anyone have a question or need clarification from Dr. Bud?
Yeah, Scott, I have a question. Uh, Dr. Bud, uh, I certainly fully support squeezing professional development in however we can, but I was curious about what, what the impact of the half-days is on some of the half-day programs like uh, aquaculture and, and agri-science, and whether those students will be able to still have their, those experiences in the afternoon.
That's right, a virtue of doing these on Wednesdays right now is that it aligns with a day that for our students is at-home learning. Now, that, for example, applies to agri-science, uh, some of our students do on their own travel from their homes to aquaculture uh, on those Wednesdays, uh, and also the RCA program, but those programs are flexible and in fact are implementing some of these with their own teachers also. I want to point out based on this that the uh, the District Professional Development Evaluation Committee is meeting this Thursday, uh, and we are working on developing a particular survey to go out to the teachers and other staff, including our paraprofessionals, who will also receive professional development uh, based on the particular needs they identify.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question?
I could then put forward the, the motion, um, correcting my, my motion from earlier. Um, so this would be for the, a motion to approve the revised two twenty, uh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty district calendar with the new Wednesday dates for um, professional development for our teachers.
I need a second. Marie Patiti, just second, okay, if there are no questions, Mr. Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I'm in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli in favor, okay, all in favor, motion passes. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bud, but are you staying here? Yes, you are. Okay, uh, Mr. Ward, Curriculum Committee report.
We have a meeting, and we have two things to present tonight, Madam Chair. One is the rulebook textbook for financial accounting.
Mike, can you speak closer to the mic?
Is the mic on, Mike?
Yes, it's on.
Just get it.
Yes, we have two items that we're going to present tonight, one, financial accounting, and two, the curriculum guide for Principles of Financial Accounting, Theater Tech, one and two, and Dr. Bud will make that report.
I do want to speak briefly about the financial accounting, but I was asked last, uh, two weeks ago, for somebody asking me to explain what this is, it's holding up the microphone, and it relates to the curriculum report. Michelle put this here to hold the mic, so it's up closer to my mouth, but this is the textbook the district adopted in nineteen eighty-eight for the ready-to-use standards and performance assessments for social studies, and I just want to report, by contrast, that the book you approved tonight will not be used to hold up the microphone, it will be in the hands of students next week. This is the financial accounting textbook that is required by our articulation agreement with Usatana Community College for students in the course whose curriculum guide follows honor CCP Principles of Financial Accounting. Ms. Southern is an outstanding business education teacher, and this text brings students really into what you might simply call accounting two, and since it's a requirement for our students to get the H C C credit, and since we budgeted for it, I will support this textbook, and I promise you, it will do more value than this one from nineteen ninety-eight does.
And Dr. Bud, it shoots the enrollment in this classroom is up to around twenty?
That's correct.
That's good to know. Okay, does anyone have a question on this doc? Okay, let us take a vote on this, uh, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli, yes, in favor. Okay, thank you, we'll move on to Theater Tech one and two.
Actually, the next would be the curriculum guide, I think, for this.
Oh, the guide for this one first, okay.
And I would just briefly say that it is aligned with Usatana, and there was good discussion at the Curriculum Committee about how Ms. Southern balances the assessments that she develops, along with the final exam, which is required from Usatana, and how a hundred percent of our students have always done very well on that final exam based on the course design she implements.
That's great to know. Any other question? Yep, we need a motion for the second, for this curriculum guide, you know what, we'll do, we'll do the two curriculum guides together, let's do that. Because there's two curriculum guides, and we can just move through with that, is that good? No one has a question on this, correct? Okay, now you want to present this?
The Theater Tech and.
Yes, Theater Tech one and two.
Theater Tech one and two uh, was a new course that the board approved last year for twenty nineteen-twenty, and it was aligned with the expansion of the arts at Trumbull High School, uh, so that we added new courses in our uh, theater department, and this is one where essentially students are able to uh, explore hands-on ways to turn drama, to turn theater uh, into art. And Mr. Braxick has worked on this course design, he has studied other programs in the area with similar courses. I am really proud to say that we have two sections of Theater Tech one this semester, and one section of Theater Tech two next semester, and it's just obvious to say that before the board approved the course, we had zero sections of it, and you have dozens of students now exploring drama, and, and of course, to be in Theater Tech two, you have the interest and prerequisite of Theater Tech one. So these are students who are exploring great passions and great interests, and you're meeting their needs in a very positive way, Mr. Braxick, that's very strong course design.
And what I'd like to add is that he did confer with the uh, Tech Ed Department and Mr. Amaturo for set-building and building props, and I think that's a great idea, that the two departments can work together as, because I know that Mr. Amaturo has a, he does build the props for the theater, doesn't he?
That's right.
Yeah, so that's a good thing that they're uh, immiserating, I guess. Okay, but that's a great thing, any questions on this uh, tech curriculum guide? It's really well-done, both of them are really well-done, so if we can, I'd like to make a motion to approve both at the same time.
So I can make that motion, um, which is such exciting work, it's so great to see all of this happening here in Trumbull. So I will make an emotion to approve the two curriculum guides, Principles of Financial Accounting and Theater Tech one and two.
I need a second.
Scott Care will second that.
Scott will second that, okay, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Patiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
Thank you, and Lucinda Timpinelli, yes, in favor, thank you, Dr. Bud.
If we're not the buckets away, we do discuss a lot too much, but being advertised on. on, unfortunately, so handheld computers or accounting, I don't know what's going to happen for the future dealing with all the accounting done by people who work very hard and all of a sudden do everything on handheld instrument. It's down the road, I'm sure, but we'll be looking back for that in a couple of years.
I can't promise what will happen with accountants, but I know that we will never replace the value of good teaching.
That is true.
I'll say.
Correct.
That is true. Okay, our next is our financial update. Mr. Cameron and Mr. Hendrickson?
Okay, good evening. I'm Al Cameron, and for the past nine months, it has been my honor to serve as your interim business manager. For the second time in nine months, a new superintendent has asked me, soon after starting their job, how do the finances look? Dr. Semel asked me the other day to share with you the information I shared with him last Tuesday, his second day on the job. I'm going to divide this into four sections, three school years, the 1920 school year, 2021, to 2022. And then the final section is just Al's observations. The first section, 1920. When I answered the question about finances for Superintendent Isagno, I had to share some unwelcome news. After being in Trumbull for about three weeks, it looked as though the Board was going to be over budget by 1.22 million dollars in the operating budget. I won't speculate on how that happened. The town's hiring Joe Santafanti of PKF to do that. But I will say that for the Board, the closure of school in March of 20 was a blessing because the early closure of school created savings in the substitute teacher account, spring sports, supplies, outgoing tuition, and outgoing transportation. Those savings turned a projected deficit in the operating budget into a surplus. They enabled us to transfer $498,000 of expense that had been booked to special revenue accounts back into the Board of Education. That 498 was driving the special revenue accounts into deficit. And they ended 1819 in deficit, $56,000. So, thanks to the transfer back to the Board of Ed, those special revenue accounts ended the year with a surplus balance of 102,000. So, for 1920, the year-end was, was good, but it certainly wasn't all positive. We did well in the general fund, the operating budget. We were able to do well in the special revenue, and we were able to make up for some lost ground. But there are still accounts with negative balances in the special revenue family of accounts. And that shouldn't be. Boards of Ed are not supposed to have any deficits. And then there's the deficit in the food service fund. And there's the $350,000 that we just recently learned is associated with litigation in Bridgeport. As I kind of close my remarks on 1920, I'd like you to think about this. Without the once-in-a-lifetime COVID pandemic, at the very best, the Board of Ed operating budget would have finished the year $300,000 in deficit. In addition, the special revenue fund would have been over budget by $400,000. Then there's the food service account, which was going to end, would have ended the year in those days with a $200,000 over budget situation. So, we would have closed the year without COVID with a $900,000 deficit. What would the town have done? What would the Board of Ed have done? I don't know. Without the early school closure, we were on track for a $900,000 deficit. That should be a wake-up call for all of us. So, now I'll talk a little bit happier news about 2021. As you guys all know, as you were part of it, a lot of tough decisions went into adopting the 2021 budget. Ralph was a superintendent for 16 years. I've been a school business manager for 25 years. We worked with Jonathan, with Dave, with John, with all the people here to the best of our ability to make sure the 2021 budget, the budget and the expenses match. To the best of our knowledge, there are no deficits built into the budget. That said, that doesn't include COVID. The budget didn't include COVID. So, we don't know what damage COVID could do to the budget. But what we do know is that at least for 2021, we tried to give you guys a running start. And that's about as good as we could do for 2021. But next that comes to 2122. And this is where the real adventure starts. I just did a quick and dirty budget for 2122. I used a teacher's contract for all the wages. I didn't worry about the administrator getting this and custodians getting that. I just said, teacher's contract is going to drive this stuff. And I believe that was 2.82% increase. I assumed a 10% increase in the health insurance. Maybe that sounds like a lot, but we have a 2% Fairfield County surcharge. So, really what that is, is an 8% health insurance increase. And then I add back the 917,000 credit that we got this year that we took against the transportation line. It could bring us back to where we'll need to be for next year. When you get all done with that, it says we're going to need $4,730,408 in new money next year. That's a 4.34% increase. If the town's not able to provide that increased level of funding, once again, we're going to be right back where we were this year. We're going to be reviewing our priorities, and the system will not be able to continue going the way we're going today. In broad strokes, if the town is able to fund a 3.5% increase, 3.5, not 4.37, we'll end up having to reduce 900,000 in existing programs. If the increase that the town can afford is only 2.5%, we, we're going to be looking at trying to reduce $2 million, $2 million of programs. With the annual appropriations over the last several years, the town has been sending the Board a message. We can't afford to keep on going like this. No matter what happens in 2122, it looks like programs will need to be cut. So, the question becomes, are we going to continue to nibble around the edges? Or is it time to take a bold leadership step, step back and re-envision what we want, and not we, because I won't be there, but what you guys want the Trumbull Public Schools to look for? You know, it's, I think it is time for that, by observations. You guys know better than I, Trumbull is a high-performing school district. In fact, it isn't just a high-performing school district, it's a really high-performing school district. It's one of the top 10 in Connecticut. And Connecticut's one of the top in the country. So, Trumbull is getting a tremendous bag for its buck. And we all know the magic happens in the classroom. And Trumbull teachers have been getting, doing a great job of making the magic happen for a long, long time. We have a unique opportunity now. We have a new superintendent, Dr. Semel. And his history is that he's achieved academic improvement with modest additional resource inputs. Gives us an opportunity. You know, the Trumbull Public Schools came great because they had great leadership and they had great support from the community. So, now I'm challenging all of you, be those great leaders again and rally this community to provide the support that the Board needs. Come together, work with Laney and work with Vicki, and see what we can do to try to make this thing work for the community of Trumbull and for the kids. You've done a great job so far. Somehow the wheels came off the wagon a little bit. But you guys, I know, I've worked with you. You guys are great people and you care about the kids. Work together, everybody. And I'm talking to the people that I can't see too, you know? We got to, this is something, this is a resource that you guys have created. You can't let this treasure go. You've got to keep it going. But you know, in things, Trumbull, things have become different. The last several years, the contractual increases in all areas of the budget have grown faster than the taxpayers, I don't know about ability, but the least willing is to pay for them. The Board has used a variety of one-time techniques to keep the music playing. As we saw in 1920, the results, those techniques aren't available to us anymore. And if we had not had COVID, we would have crashed. So, as the funding has become scarcer, we need to keep the music playing. Trumbull has systemically chosen to increase investment in the classrooms to avoid investment in other areas. For example, you guys know, we had two assistant superintendents. Now, there's only one. There were two special ed coordinators. Now, there's only one. There was a facilities director, a maintenance supervisor, and a custodial supervisor. All those positions have been rolled into one. There is no HR director. Account reductions have been made in technology, tech staff, tech integrators, and the support for distance learning. School-based math and literacy specialists have been reduced by 50%. I could go on. I don't want to go on. I just want to ask you guys, and I want to ask the community leaders, get together, develop a vision of what you want the Trumbull Public Schools to be, and agree that this is what it's going to require, fund it, and then make it so. And that, the only thing I have to say beyond all that, oh, there we go. I thought this was clever at the time I wrote it. Please remember, for the show to go on, the actors need to be supported by a stage crew, the orchestra, and the conductor. If all we have are actors, the show won't be successful. So, I'd ask you, when you're looking at your priorities, think about that too. You don't need just actors, you need stage crew. Finally, I will conclude by saying it has been a real honor and a privilege to work in this district. I am so glad that Ralph thought of me when he was trying to think about business managers that might be looking for a gig. I started to name people that I thought went above and beyond, and then I realized, nah. There were so many people who go above and beyond all day, every day to make this thing a success, that if I left any of them off, I'd feel really bad. So, I'm not going to do that. The only thing I will say is that there's a lot of really good, hardworking people that I was privileged to call coworkers while I was here. It is, it has been a pleasure to know you and to work with you. And I'd just like to say especially thanks to Ralph, Garrett, he's the one that got it all started too, and Lucinda and the Board for giving me the chance to serve. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Al, thank you so much.
So heartfelt.
Thank you, Al, very much. We were very fortunate that you were here to help us through this. And I, I do understand your plea, and you know that this Board of Education is always looking for what we can do the best for our students, our staff, and our programs. And I think if we were all millionaires right now, we would fund it ourselves. I said, because everybody's heart is in the right place on this board, that I know. So, I just hope that out there heard you. And if they did, then we'll be in a good place. But we'll work together to see what we can do. And with, I'm sure with Dr. Semel here, he will help us as, as we plead to him, you know, every, every day that we talk to him. But thank you very much, Al. We couldn't have done this without you, truly. You have been a true asset in our financial area, and I, we will miss you. And we wish you all the best of luck, health, and happiness as, that you're on to something new. Thank you again. Marty, any comment that you would like to make?
I certainly appreciated Al's comments about the budget. I think it's important to identify where we stand as we, especially as I take over the helm of this great district. We need to come and recognize reality, and we need to understand where we, where we're starting. So, as we move forward, we can, we can go from there. And I appreciate all the work Al's done. Like I mentioned before, he's been a true, a true friend these last seven days. And I actually started talking to him while before, when I was appointed. That was when my conversation started. But going to miss Al. I'm sure Al will be available by the phone, but I also know Al is ready to put down the pencil and start and stop accounting for a little while, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Ward?
Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second, anyone?
I second.
Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night and have a good evening.